Ladies and gentlemen, it's five o'clock. 12:19, 2024. We will begin our work session.
Thank you. All right, so I'm starting the computer. Just this body. Because I'm gonna have any more say. While it's coming up, I'll look at the printed agenda. Does anyone have questions about the board minutes? This is consent items from numeral two, A or B? Any questions about any of those, either of those board minutes? Okay. If not, I will ask Miss Elizabeth Sout if you don't mind coming up and sharing the financials with us. I think Russ, you have that ready to pull up so that everyone else can see what Miss Sout is sharing. I'm trying to get back along then.
All right, good evening, everyone. I am going over the financial recount through the month of November of 2024. We're in the second month of our fiscal year. Our beginning fund balance is $18,263,672.97. Our ending fund balance is $16,642,43.81. Our general fund balance is $10,432,911.34. Our revenues for the month of November are $2,468,892.2. And our expenditures for the month of November were $3,224,256.83. We, for the, our overall budget of revenue, sorry, are 13.93% as of, we are in our second month of our fiscal year, which means we should be right at 16.67%. So our overall budget of revenues through November are 13.93%. And our overall budget of expenditures through November are 18.41%. Our general fund reserve balance is 4.47 months' reserves. And our one-month requirement of expenditures is $2,332,333,891.83. And our CMP fund reserve balance, we have a 1.75 months' reserve. And the one-month expenditure requirement is $218,228.96. If anyone has any questions for me.
What do you attribute all of these reserves fundings? Is that due to your good management? Or we're just cutting back on what we're doing? We're getting more funds from the government?
It's actually been consistent, pretty consistent since I started a year ago. So it's just, I would hope to say it's my good management, but we're doing, we're rocking along pretty well. But like I said, when, I think when I first started, we were right around five, over five, five months' reserves, close to six months' reserves, I believe, when I first started a year ago. And we're doing very well. You all remember us, the funds rolled out too. So we're gonna be watching it pretty closely and making sure we're maintaining and going forward.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
I do have one other question. I think in some of the board minutes, we were just discussing some of the financial records being.
Yes, uh-huh. Yes, yes, and I sent, I emailed all of them out to you guys to watch the Big Town Monday. So, yes, the accountability report, is that what you're looking for? The check numbers? And I've always sent that. It's just, it was just a mission. I send it every month, but it was just.
Will it be going to assembly or will it be coming via email?
I'm gonna, going forward, I'm gonna send you guys an email and copy you when I submit the financials by the date to Ms. Schuler's every month. I'm gonna copy you guys so you guys have a, have a copy of what was sent to be uploaded into it.
Is there any way we could go back to putting that in assembly?
We can, if you'd like. But it's not a problem.
Is it not being put in assembly as well?
No, I think there was a question a while back about putting it in assembly, about something.
Yes, there is. A, anything that the board votes on, whatever documents are there, then they become public documents. The question of, I think, you have so many people now who we're trying to block from obtaining information so that account couldn't be compromised. What's the word I'm looking for? When we're talking about, you don't want to give away information that's gonna compromise on the accountability report.
You guys, I send that to you guys separately because it has information that we don't want the public to see, like check numbers and vendor information.
The checking and vendor information is where I was going, but we could, I don't know if we can generate that, leaving that column out.
I do every month, and that's what's uploaded on the website. I'm required to put that information on the website.
Yeah, because that's how we're required to report it on the web.
Right, yes. So the law changed to say, hey, you know, we don't need to put this information, school systems don't need to put this information on a website. So we just do a, there's two ways I run it. I run it less summary, which is the way that it gets uploaded onto our website, and that doesn't have the check numbers and the vendor information.
And what was being emailed includes that information.
Yes, because you guys would like to see that. So that's why we're going separate.
Well, what's in assembly matches what's required by the state and is protected by law.
Right, that's, that's it.
And that's my best understanding of that. But I understand why they don't want that information compromised.
I can see that.
So that makes sense to me.
But anything you guys, you know, whenever I would go out to you, I'll get it separated.
You could send them away and then take and take that information and submit an invoice. And if we're not careful, we'll think of an invoice as a duty.
You're right. So what, Russ?
He's right. The people are targeting the finance department in school systems, including your payroll department, being that they're sending, getting those names off of our website, even getting those vendors and submitting it to someone and saying, I'm the one who your finance director has told me to transfer money. And so those vendors are, and so taking those down keeps the finance department from being targeted. And so that's why we told the State Department it needs to come off, the names need to come off, so they won't be targeted as much. And you'll see that this is the top frame usually happens around Christmas, when they target the finance department to try to get them to submit money or, you know, click on links.
And that's through assembly?
That's what they're removing off assembly so that you're getting it by email with the vendors on it. But we're removing the vendors. And you're just, and on assembly where the public sees it, it's just generic, all the mail. For the sake of the public, not to see the vendors.
You're still seeing the transactions and the amount of the transactions. You're just not seeing the vendor information.
So I think, if I'm not mistaken, I think it lumps it into like that certain expenditure category.
It does. And I know you like to review that vendor information so you can see specifically, you know, where, you know, where we're paying, who we're paying, and all the specific information. But of course, we wanna protect that to avoid, you know, phishing or any kind of cyber security compromise.
All right.
Anything else?
No, I think you pretty, pretty covered it. All of you.
Thanks for that. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Sout. All right, action item C, our fundraisers. Does anyone have questions about any of the fundraisers? Okay, if we don't have any questions about those, we will move into row numeral three, our action items. And the first item there you will see is personnel. You can see the current job openings that we have. We're happy to answer questions about those. Mental health coordinator. We have a teacher for after-school tutoring that's needed. We have an elementary job hosting, an anticipated preschool teacher. And we always keep our substitutes posted. An anticipated instructional assistant. A CMP worker, a part-time instructional assistant, and a long-term sub professor. You all have any questions about those positions? Or Ms. Nicole, or anybody who's working to fill those? If you all would like to provide any information, feel free to do so now.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Situation that we just spoke about in the call board meeting.
Yes, sir.
That's not reflective in the positions that we have posted down?
No, sir. We have another elementary opening that we plan to fill from that. I think that's what you're asking. Yes, sir, that's part of what's, that's part of what's here. Posted, yes, sir. The sergeant, mental health coordinator, I believe. Scott, Mr. Hodges, I'm sorry. I believe you and Ms. Dentson have been working on those interviews to fill that. We should, we hope to have these filled. Would you, would y'all say it's safe to say that at our January meeting, you might have a recommendation ready?
We're gonna try. I know this is kind of a time where we're about to go for a break. And we, right, day and we come back, and we've got three days to get everything ready. So we'll work some over the break, hopefully have that nailed down, have it turned in that day.
Thank you. And, you know, we'll try. Some of these just stay posted because we're always looking for substitutes and things of that nature. But we hope that we can get everything filled as quickly as possible in January would be my hope. So hopefully we'll be able to do that. Any other questions? All right, we'll move into action item D, our supplemental positions. Any questions about that position? Okay, action item D is the quarterback club is asking to provide funding to provide supplement because you can see. I'm happy, or Mr. Toad is happy to answer questions about those.
Is that what we've been, is this an annual thing that we do for the, for the assistant coaches or the coaches?
I think sometimes the quarterback clubs or the booster clubs want to do this. And yes, sir, I do believe that it is annual. I'm not sure if this is aligned with the timeline.
This, one of those is, this person did not receive a supplement. They're originally on volunteer list. And the quarterback club wanted to offset their expenses by helping them. And another has a little bit of a drive situation. And so they also wanted to compensate him for his extra time they would spend driving. So that's, that's the purpose of those two.
Yeah, I kinda thought, I kinda, you know, but thank you for clearing that up. I was reading between the lines. I was thinking that's probably what happened, so thank you for that.
All right, any other questions? All right, action item E is the 25-26 school calendar. I do have that in my report that has some, here we go, right here. I wanted to show y'all some results. So I have sent out, we started working with our faculty and staff with three options for the school calendar. And I sent out one option to reduce our three options to two options. And now we are at the two. And you can see that there were 166 responsive. Option two and option three were the two options that remained. Option one obviously was discarded after the first survey that was sent. And so again, I'll just say that we do not collect. When I send this out, I don't know who voted, how anyone voted. The only information I'm collecting is what school or what location are you voting from? So I have that information, but it does not share who's voting how. So I don't know how anyone voted unless someone elected to tell me how they voted. I don't go and ask, but I have had several people tell me, I voted for option three because I want that fall break. Or I voted for option two because I didn't want that fall break. So I do not know how anyone voted, but I wanted you to see that of our faculty and staff, the breakdown of the 166 faculty and staff members who elected to participate in the survey, 57% voted for option three, 42% option two. And those numbers, where I have the 95 in red, that's just, that's what 57.2% of 166 is. So that would be 95 of our staff members. And then 71 of our staff members voted for option two. If you wouldn't mind, advance from that. Russ, and again, what I'm saying, what I collect, I do not see any emails. But I do ask, where are you working primarily every day? And I say primarily because we do have some itinerant staff members who are traveling, but I wanna know where you spend the majority of your school day. And so you can see, based on the 166 responsive, who elected and how many from that particular location elected to participate in the survey. And again, I don't know who those people are, or I just know they're at that school, or that, or the central office, or the maintenance and bus shop. But I do not know who those folks are. But we did have participation from every location.
That little sliver of blue, I think it's blue. Is that the maintenance bus?
Yes, sir, that's the maintenance from the bus shop, yes, sir.
All right.
So we did have some participation from everybody. So again, I will also, we'll just leave it there for right now. But when I get into my report, I would like to go, I can do it now. Do you care to advance that? I'll just take care of it right now. So in this option, y'all, y'all know that any time we're voting on a calendar option, we're always gonna have those, as I mentioned, who volunteered, how they voted to me. You're always gonna have some in favor and you're gonna have the opposition. But I do love to give everybody the opportunity to provide feedback and input because for me, you know, I'm a 240-day employee. I'm going to be at work, so this calendar does not really affect me as it does some of our faculty and staff. So that's why I want the input from everybody. And so when I gave the second survey, I asked a couple of questions. What is it about this option that you like? Or what, I don't remember the exact words I used. I'm not gonna put anybody on the spot and say, hey, what exactly did I ask? But something to the, I'm paraphrasing here. Something to the effect of, is there anything about option two that you would like for me to consider? Is that, that may be close. So something you'd like for me to consider, to make a change about. And these are the two big issues, or topics, they're not issues, but topics that really resonated as far as the results from the feedback from our staff. So if you look at the top, a third of July. So this was in option two and three. The majority of people who chose to provide feedback wanted to know, will we have, if we go with option three, will we have time to prepare our classes? Or will all five of these days be dedicated professional development? Because we need time to get our classrooms prepared to accept students as we reopen and get ready to open the new school year. So I have let everybody know that what we've done in the past, the past four years is all I can speak of in terms of calendar development. But we have had three days prior to the start of school. We do have, you know, trainings that we need to get in. And some of those are district-specific and some of those are school-specific. But I would like to make sure that if this option is one you approve, then I wanna make sure that they have two dedicated days where they can feel comfortable knowing, hey, I have this dedicated time to get my reading prepared. Now, as far as which two days or whatnot, I'm not that far yet. So I don't know what that will look like, but I will say I understand that they need time. So that's the answer to that question. The other question about that revolved and centered around, can we have fewer professional development days than seven? It's my understanding that we're not required to have those days. And so just to clarify, I would like to point out that we are required by the state department to have 180 instructional days. Now, you can have a day requirement. You can make that 180-day requirement. Or there's an hour requirement that you can submit and turn in a waiver to the state superintendent and try to get that. I'm always gonna go with the day requirement, and I want to explain why. We have many times where we might need an early dismissal. For example, traditionally, we've always had a homecoming parade, and we have a half-day where we do that. But when you're following the day, the number of days in the school year versus the hours, you've completed that full day. You've met your requirement. But if you, if you elect to go to hours, you may not meet those requirements if you do those kinds of things. And then also, when you have weather emergencies or any other type of reason that you might need to dismiss early or start late, then you've compromised those number of hours. And so for me, knowing that we fulfilled those 180 days, I just think that's more comfortable. And then the seven days with PD are required days. If you take a look at the state teacher salary matrix, that state teacher salary matrix says at the very top that it is based on, we're funded on 187 days. And if you get into the legislation and read the, read the law about those 187 days, it says, if your system has not fulfilled those, you could lose, you could only be funded for what number of days that you did. So I don't wanna put the system in jeopardy of us having to use local funds when we could have easily followed what is typically supposed to be put in place anyway. So just as an explanation there, I don't wanna compromise any funding. I think the language there is pretty clear about that. So that's why I elect. But that's why you will see different start and ending dates for different school systems. Because some school systems operate on the hours and some on the days. But within those parameters, 180 instructional days where students are required to come to school, you can have a different start date. You can have a different end date. So that's where there's not one, there's not a kinky cutter or this is what everybody's gonna follow. So there's where the flexibility lies there. But this option, again, is the option that you saw 166 of our faculty and staff selected. The other thing I will point out is, you see I have Good Friday, and I put April 3rd, 2026, because this came to me. I had a lot of feedback that said, we'd love to be off on Good Friday. Well, I don't have a problem with that. As a matter of fact, we actually had, before we ever put this out, we actually had the spring break. If you notice, it's March 23rd through March 27th. We actually had it at March 30th through April 3rd, which concluded Good Friday. The reason that we moved it is when I saw Jackson County's calendar, I moved it back because over the past four years, what I have heard over and over from our staff also is we would like you to align those spring break times. So I'm kind of like, well, I can move it, it's not a problem, but then it's not gonna be aligned with their dates in their calendar. But either way, it doesn't matter to me. We're fine either way as far as testing goes. Do you see any reason that it couldn't be moved?
No.
So I'm not opposed to keeping it this way because if you look at it one way, this is the calendar that 166 people selected. But I'm not opposed to sending that back out and saying, hey, would y'all like to move this to March 30th to April 30th? It doesn't matter to me, but I have had a lot of questions about that. So do you all have questions for me about it?
Whatever it is going on, that's what I'm good with. I've always said that.
And just know it's majority. There are people who are not wanting to be happy with this response, with this option. But on the other side, there were more people who were happier with this option than option two. So, and this is why I encourage participation because to me, I'm trying to go on what our faculty and staff have said they would like to see. Okay, you don't have to advance that right now, Russ, but thank you so much. Okay, moving on, we'll go to action item F. And that is Harris School Solutions, school forms purchased. So we've been working on some of our processes and trying to go from paper with our processes to an online format. Russ, you wanna talk a little bit about what we're working on here?
Yes, actually, there's 11 forums we're looking to create. All this, and the son of ones that we've already got to just the continuation of what we've been working on to digitize most of the forums that our faculty and staff use over the course of the year. Bus drills, bus trips, private living, so.
You actually have this list on your, if you look.
I believe it's page two.
Then you'll see at the very bottom, under the flow here, you'll see notes and it lists those forums.
And we're just looking to get these forums developed and put into place, basically making it work easier for the staff to use, plus it saves paper and basically to get all the responses and get approvals on everything through email. And it just makes the flow and the speed of getting things through a lot clearer. And this looks a lot cleaner than the others that you had to look at.
Right, so if you, if you take a look, if you keep scrolling, if you go past page two, you'll see the hard copies of what we're filling out now for each of these. And so the hope is, exactly as Russ said, it kinda streamlines things a little bit. But, you know, a lot of times, we want things to be processed a little more quickly. And if it's electronic, it's gonna make it around faster so that we get it processed more quickly. On the front end, I'm gonna say it may slow it down a minute while we learn it. But overall, it's going to be better in the long run.
I would think administrators, if they do their job, maybe a little easier. The inventory mobile forms, definitely easier.
I know, it's good things, that's wonderful. But my question is, are teachers logging in okay these days? So they, are they logging in? Are they getting to school on time and logging in properly like they're supposed to?
To my knowledge, they are. They're able to log into the machines fine. I didn't, you know, usually if we've got some kind of issue with people logging in, anything that's, they've, password has changed and we have to make a little adjustment because in the past, we've had a few issues with, once you get your password changed, you didn't change on email, but we've got that under care of. And, but other than that, or to my knowledge, no one's really had any major issues logging in. So they forget their password every now and then though. And there's not much I can do to help that because I can't see that. I can reset it, but I can't give them what to put in.
I have a question. So it says 11 new forms, and then it has a price for that.
There was one form he had listed twice in the app. And I marked that, put it on there.
And then is it like a set number of forms per price? Like between one and 12 of this much?
To be honest, it's depending upon the forms, really.
I think it depends on the complexity of how hard it is to build, whatever it is you want. Because you may have a form that only, you know, it's a small amount of information, so it may not take nearly as much work as the next form, but it's going to be pretty comprehensive in nature.
Some of the, some of the forms they've developed for us so far is like our inventory, not inventory, yeah, inventory mobile forms. They've done that for us. It was a little bit of a process to get that set up, to get the workflow done on it correctly. Then you have the DRC form that we have. Getting it where principals can upload information into that. And then actually the authorization process. into that, and then actually the authorization process. There's, I'm trying to think what other forms, but it really, it depends on how many people need to get the form authorized and so on, whether or not you need to upload information, store that information. Like if you need evidence uploaded with something, then there's, you've got to store that evidence. And so what the process pulls them to is that we can go back and pull this information and get it fully in time. So there's a fee to retain all that information.
And we're just working through kind of, I guess, in small chunks of information, because I think it would be information overload if you just do all of these things at one time.
Well, there's a little bit of a process, because depending on the department and the form, or getting input from each department, how they want the form to be, okay. If you're a teacher submitting a form, who do you want it to go to? Okay, it needs to go to this person first to get authorized, which is usually the principal. And from the principal to finance, what person in finance gets it? Then who's going to sign, have to final sign off in finance before it goes to any of the sign. So I mean, there's a number of steps, and we're having each department go in and work through that process with the developer, and make sure that they're getting what they want and how they want.
I think that's a real action.
It's fun.
It's a wild work.
It's not fun.
Getting it in place is another thing, isn't it?
But the software just takes it to the next person that needs it.
Yes, yeah. Basically, you get an email, and you get to see what has been filled out, who's authorized it before you, and you can look at what they're requesting, or what they're needing, or whatever it is. And then basically, you sign it, it's stamped date and time, and depending on whether or not needs another authorization, it goes from you to the next person.
I mean, mine is a paper too, but since, you know, we're all human, and sometimes a piece of paper might come up missing, and then you've got to try to find that, so this will be a much more effective way. It's just putting it in place, and we're going to have a little patience and a little understanding there. That's some grace.
Is this proposal time sensitive? I see where the proposal day, proposal date of December 3rd, 2024, an expiration date.
That's just for the quote.
This is a discounted rate, you're saying? It's a good quote, though.
Well, the quote is good for you.
You know, I try to get pretty cheap anyway, but you know, there are some things that I don't do so much.
Well, bang for your buck, that's what I'm talking about.
You know, I try to get as much flow out of that turnip as I can.
That's what I'm talking about. Thanks, Senator.
Thank you, Russ. Any other questions about these forms? All right, action item G is a Ninja One software purchase. And so, Russ, why don't you tell us what the Ninja One is?
One of the things with the IT department is, if you have anything to do with computers, most of the time, yeah, we played whack-a-mo with the IT department. Because your computer breaks, we come along, whack-a-mo, fix it, get it running, move on, that sort of thing. What I'm trying to do is get it where we're a little bit more proactive. And so the software gets installed and made in on the computer. It lets us know how much drive space you have free, how much memory you're utilizing on a regular basis, how much of your processor you use on a regular basis. And we can set some limits in that. And basically, I did a trial with it and put it into place, and tried to keep up with some of the computers and just how much hard drive space they got. Well, I started getting messages, well, this coach has got a laptop, he uses 95% of his hard drive, he's got 5% of the read, and it's probably running like hot water. And so he kind of gives us a little bit of heads up, saying, there's about to be a problem here, he's about to run out of disk space to refresh his computer, we need to go check it out. So we're trying to get a little bit more on the preemptive side rather than reactionary, because most of the time, we're, you know, I can't determine when that switch is going to fail. You know, when it fails, it's like, oh, okay, well, I got a problem, I got to deal with it. So if I can put some stuff into place that says, hey, we're starting to see a lot of errors on this switch, or a lot of problems with this computer, and we can put some stuff in place to do this that will help preempt some of that as well. So it's like if we can tell it to go, empty all your trash, empty all your temp files, and pre-open this space till we get there. So I mean, it's a kind of trying to get ahead of the curve and make it where we show up before you have the problem, not after you have the problem.
You have any other questions about item D?
I do.
Okay. We'll move on to item H, which is a three-year lawnmower lease agreement. Mr. Arnold, I'm going to ask you to talk about this for me, please.
Sure. Recently, you know, when our mowers came, the lease came up, we paid those leases off on the two Kubotas. And if you remember, we hired Adam to mow, and so we took the job there, then the high school was leased, and that lease we paid them to be off. So all of the leases are paid off with options to buy at the end. This is a three-year lease for these upgrades, as you see, as far as specific cuts of horsepower for the larger areas. You know, there's some, especially since we're taking the custodian's job, we need to get up close. And so there's different neck sizes, obviously, different horsepower, and, you know, but again, you can do a one-year lease payment each year over the three years. I have to do it monthly, the same, as we did last time as well. So pretty much, the old leases are over, and these new leases will be the ones we would enter in to replace the former mowers.
Get three of them?
Three of them.
You got three men to run them?
About right now. We got, I mean, we do. We, Adam was that third guy.
That's right.
Yeah, so he took a job of just using his degree.
Gotcha. Yeah, you said that, too much.
Yep.
Are this three-year plan, is that what we've been using all along?
This is, to my knowledge, that three-year plan started before I came to this position, but it just ended. So we will be doing the same, three-year lease again.
Yeah, should this be the second one?
Any other questions about the mower lease? Okay.
Y'all feel like it worked out? Because over the past three, everything's going well?
I think it's gone very well. I think the grounds look really nice, very complimentary to the work that has been done. I hope that it's been helpful on each campus as well, but I mean, overall, I'm pleased.
And speaking as a formal principal, I can really see the benefits of using this type of system versus the custodian getting out there and all that.
100 million, 100%.
I got a question.
We might have several custodians. No, yeah, but they're, you know, they didn't tie all the mowers.
So how much did we save by going through the lease versus having to keep those other older mowers up?
That's a great question. Geez, you may have better knowledge than I did, so I do know this. I know that the Kubotas that were purchased, personally, I bought a John Deere at 9/30, and I gave $5,000 for it. It's paid off. I thought that was stupid, to give that much money for it. It's in great condition right now, and now you can pay $15,000 for the same mower. So I could sell it right now and make more than I paid for to begin with. And so that's an opportunity we have now, you know, that we might have, you know, otherwise as far as, you know, like trucks. All of it, you know, same thing with just the inflation, that we have an opportunity now, obviously, to better ourselves to that point because of, you know, the economics around it, so to speak.
I think those other mowers, when we did this a few years ago, they were costing us, I think we figured up around eight, nine thousand.
You got before we were working on the mowers, the mowers.
Right, right.
That's, you know, when you're in heat of it in the summertime, you, you know, we were running two mowers at the time, and even before we took on all this extra work, and it just, you couldn't do nothing. Now, the lease, you know, we're all, you know, the whole lease period is really under warranty. You know, if we have a major breakdown, they're going to supply you with another mower, you know, within a certain amount of hours, you know. If they can fix it in the first 48 or there, something like that, they'll supply you. So there's a lot of benefits, you know, you're still going to have to care of the wear parts, but, you know, it's, we've not, we've not been sitting around watching the crass grow like we were before.
Yeah, and just like you said, people with loaning have not been the issue of the order of the day, they've, they're ready.
You know, we had a couple issues with these new mowers, and it just, you know, we were in COVID, you know, and that, you know, there was a lot, a couple things we had to wait on, but I mean, it was, you know, they brought us along more the one time we did wait. Luckily, the second time we had something, we weren't, you know, in a bind or anything like that, so what an issue there, but it's, we were took care of. Same thing on that school, we should be too.
We've been able to stay under those hours.
Oh, yeah. We kind of, you know, it's hard to guess that hours, you know, we were, you know, you could, I think on that, you have a couple of the foot. You know, we could, we could go less hours, but it was, we were borderline, and I just threw, you know, it's not a whole lot of difference in price there for that, and, you know, give a stock, you know, we did whatever we needed to do, but not worry about it.
Thank you. Appreciate that, DT and Bethany. Y'all have any other questions about the agreement? Okay, for action item I, I do want to talk about school safety, but I would like to shift down and get to our information, and then we'll show the rest of this, because there's quite a bit of information inside that. So if y'all don't mind, we'll just move into the information. And A, you see the contract spreadsheet. Does anyone have questions about any of the contracts on the spreadsheet? Okay, B would be the fundraiser list, and again, these are fundraisers that have already been board approved. Okay, y'all don't have any other questions? Ms. South, capitalized asset audits. Want to talk about what that process is and what you're working on, please, ma'am?
Sure. We're in the middle of doing an internal audit of our capital asset inventory, and that includes, you know, all those items of $5,000 or more. And it's basically just to confirm the existence and the condition of the assets that we currently have on our inventory list, and also the condition of those assets. And if there's items that are obsolete or damaged or anything that we need to dispose of, we will make that determination, and then we plan to have this done by, by April to have that. It will just compile this, things that we need to dispose of, we will get that list to present that to you guys for board approval.
Thank you. So that'll be a comprehensive list?
Yes.
So moving forward, once I get the list updated, we will be looking at it twice annually. So right now, we're just trying to make sure that we have everything there, and then we'll get into that twice.
And to make sure that, you know, what the auditors, the auditors in our list and what the auditors have, we're in sync and they're tied together.
Thank you. Any questions on this panel about that? Okay, so we're ready to go back into our action item I now, which is our school safety purchases, so if you don't mind. I've got a few things, you can get there, so let me just go through these. We've already done a report card, so I wanted to talk to you about, if you'll go back, please. We saw, I shared just a little bit of information about our state report card results, and you're probably thinking, what are you doing with the same thing up here? But if you look at the red arrow, so the one on the left is the one that we just got back, right? This is from last year, this is our current reporting, 2324, because remember, it's a year and a reader, so this is how we performed last year, but it's actually reported for this year. And then last year's report, which is 2223, and so if you look, you see we improved system-wide from an 87 to an 88. And you can see the breakdown by school of how we did overall. So Russ, if you don't mind advancing, I'll talk a little bit about that. And you see in the right over there, I have highlighted this particular year, these are our results that just came back. But I wanted to talk about where, how did the scores, how does this originate, how do we get them? I've had a lot of questions about, how did you come up with an 88 if you just add up the five schools and you divide them? But it doesn't work that way. There is a whole system about how those scores come to be. And I wanted to share how that process is. So if you look at the very top, it says schools without a grade 12. So this is going to be four of our schools, and this is how Nelson Caldwell Collins and the Junior High is scored. So if you look, take a look at academic achievement and academic growth in that indicator. You see 80% of their score, K8, is coming from academic achievement and academic growth. Now take a look at the bottom here, schools with a grade 12, districts and states. So our system report is obviously, those factors are going to be in the system. They're going to put in our graduation rate, our college and career readiness rate, and they should, right? So when the state is reporting the state data, it's going to include those things, just like a high school. So I want you to see the difference in how the calculations go. So 80% for K8 schools comes from academic achievement and growth, 5% of the score comes from English language proficiency, and 15% of the school's score in K8 comes from chronic absenteeism. And then at the bottom, you see, here's how the weighted averages go for schools with a grade 12. So that would be, this is how the high school gets its score, and this is how the system, how us as a whole gets our score. So there is a big difference about how each of the schools are graded. So I hope that helps to kind of shine a little light, so you see that they're not all graded the same way. So if you'll advance that screen for me, Russ? I wanted you to see overall how we did based on from last year to this year. So if you see where I have the colored rose, everything in green shows system-wide, here's where we grew. Okay, so we grew as a system with academic achievement. And you can look from last year and see that overall, the points we earned as a system was 13.8 points. And this year, we received 14.34. That is a pretty significant gain for academic achievement, so our schools are to be commended for that growth. And again, each school is going to have its own score based on the reporting piece I just showed you. Academic growth, if you look at this, this is another great point about shop for city schools. Notice that for two years in a row, we have earned all of the points that we can get, and we get the full 25% weight there when the average is calculated. Our graduation rate grew, so that is in green to show that we improved from 27.47% to 27.97%. So what that means essentially is, more students graduated in their cohort on time when they should. Here are our areas in yellow that as a system, we show that we need to work to improve. So our college and career readiness score. Notice last year, we had nine points earned, and this year, we had 8.7. Not a major change, but still, we showed a decline. Mr. Haas, would you like to comment on that?
Yes. When you see the CCR rate, actually, that's the two years of the years. Even though the report card was based on the 23 and 24 data for all the rest of it, actually the CCR rate is from 2223. So I can go ahead and tell you that for next year, that 8.7 will be right at about a 9.2, because we showed great growth last year in the number of our students that earn a CCR status. Again, in Alabama, you can earn CCR through one of eight ways. And so we offer all of those to our students at the high school, and so we're seeing growth there, and will continue to. Starting next year, next year's senior class, every one of them must be CCR in order to graduate. So I'm not really, I'm not really sure how the state's going to adjust this formula, because again, the graduation rate and the CCR rate will have to be, will have to be equal. So we haven't heard anything about that yet, but again, starting next year, next year's seniors, they must be CCR in order to graduate.
And just so we're all clear, we know that we have a state reporting system and a federal reporting system. And so we have to write, we receive federal funds, which is the majority of the school systems in the state of Alabama, and so we have to meet federal targets on this. So that's kind of where the state comes up with it. So we'll see. So we'll see how this goes, but we already know that we've shown growth for the college and career readiness piece. And, you know, again, that kudos to Mr. Haas for the things that have been put in place. And then I think Mr. Tubbs and the team at Scottsboro High School do a great job in their data meetings, looking at ways, looking at scheduling to make sure that our students are college and career ready because we all know, not every child is going to be successful going to a four-year college. Not every child is going to be successful going into a two-year. So every, or even going straight into the workforce. So that's where we really have to, you know, drill down and know our students individually to help them decide what option is best for them. The next piece, we declined in, or, yeah, declined in chronic absenteeism. This is something that we work on all the time. We ask for parents assistance with this. But the definition and how this is categorized is sometimes difficult because a lot of times people don't know that even with absences that are doctors accused can count against this. Mr. Hodges, Mr. Ashley, either of y'all want to speak to that?
Yeah, so it's just, it's just all about awareness at the end of the day. I mean, you can't, I mean, you can do everything at the hall time and, you know, bring them to school, but all you can do is explain it to the parents and put it out there. You know, I feel like our school did a pretty good, pretty good job. I mean, that's not terrible at all. I mean, especially compared to other, you know, school systems that are much worse. But at the same time, you know, we don't want to get complacent. Easiest way to improve report cards would always tell parents, just have them get it to school. But the state does, at the end of the year, they run a report. And every student that has 18 or more days total that they've missed, they're counted as chronic absenteeism. It doesn't matter if they have doctor's notes or a ride.
And that's the definition. So, you know, even if you have a student who have a valid doctor's reason for not being there, they're going to count as part of that chronic absenteeism. So that's sometimes challenging, but we just, it is what it is and we work through it. But again, the greatest chance of success for our students is for them to be in school every day. So we encourage that. We talk to parents about it all of the time and we'll continue to work. And even though as a system, I will point out that all of these target areas of improvement as a system, when we break it down by schools, some of our schools actually show growth here where some did not. So you'd have to look at individual school reports. And then the last one is progress, progress in English language proficiency. And you see, we declined a little bit. Ms. Hood, I know you are, you oversee EL students, so would you like to speak to that?
I would. And for the past two years, not so much this year, but the past two years, we've had a huge influx of students that enroll in that are EL at the secondary level that speak no English. So the higher the grade level, the harder it is to get that English language proficiency. If you know, you know, the access score of 4.8 is the highest in the state level, but then it isn't where else. Again, that English language proficiency, it's been out. The greater the chance that we have, the harder that we can get them and that's how to watch with our enrollment.
Thanks, Ms. South.
It kind of asks a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any particular pattern or trend? I know sometimes students come to, to us and they're in the 10th grade or 11th grade or it, are we seeing any particular trend or grade entry for the high school?
The chances of over-enrolling this year, what I've seen from the EL portion of that, I'm not saying a trend this year, but for the past two years, we saw a lot between eighth and 10th grades.
And we're seeing a lot of success. We probably have more success than we ever had in terms of the pass rating, what Ms. Hood's talking about with the ACC test, which is where the students demonstrate their knowledge of the English language on this test. But we see that success coming out of our elementary grades. So as she's mentioning, by the time they get into high school or, you know, even, even junior high, it is hard to acquire a second language. Research shows that it takes seven years to acquire a second language. And that's only conversationally speaking. So they're almost coming in knowing, we're going to do our best, but we may not be successful, but yet they are still required to take that exam. So I know it's as frustrating for a student as it is for us.
And the numbers of 4.6 and 4.7 that we had at the junior high and high school level were great. I mean, we, I'm just literally right there. That last little point aren't yet.
And I'd also point out, again, I think I've said this before, but 4.8 is what the state's exit score is, which is higher than most states in the nation. Most states are 4.2. So if we were operating under those guidelines, we would be much higher. So, but we don't set those scores, so we just try to work as hard as we can to get our students there. So, but they have the best chance of success, the younger they are with learning and being embedded into the English language environment. So anyway, but that's our scores overall, and I'm very proud. Some of our schools did decline just a little bit, but when you take a look at how the difference is in those K8 schools earning that score as opposed to a, a grade, a school with a grade 12, very different in how it's calculated. So we have a lot to be proud of. An 88 overall and taking a look, the scores are public, so I encourage you to take a look and see how well we perform against other schools around us because I, I think that we have done a fantastic job. And that, that is kudos to our administrators, our teachers, our instructional support staff from CMP to bus drivers. It takes everybody to working it, so I think everybody's to be commended here for that. So any questions about that? Okay. I think that's it. If you don't mind advancing. Okay, so we are ready to talk about some school safety improvements. As we get started with this, if you'll just advance to the next slide. We have, we always talk about school safety. We may not talk about it here in our meeting, but Mr. Arnold oversees, he is our district school safety coordinator, which is required by the state now, and he has that assignment. And it is not something that he, nor I, nor any other administrator here takes lightly. We're always watching school safety. We, we practice our drills monthly. We participate in ongoing training. And as y'all know, we even had the, um, the CASRO president. So that's the Alabama Association of School Resource Officers. Officer Pamela Revels came and talked to us early in September. But just kind of wanted to preface these items that we'll bring in front of you tonight with kind of why we're going with the things that we're going with. And we all know, we see the paper, we see the news, we, we understand that unfortunately, there's incidents on, on school campuses that, you know, are, quite frankly, they're scary for everybody. But I would like to point out, if you look at the right side of this chart here, this is since August 2024, and this is certainly not comprehensive at all, but we do know that on September 4th, there was a school shooting in Georgia. And that is kind of, you know, right after schools getting started. It was certainly alarming to everyone. That kind of prompted a, oh my goodness, let's take a look at all of our safety improvements. Where are we? Of course, we're always doing that, but that always brings that heightened sense of alert, just like Officer Revels shared with us when she came and presented. And then y'all know, September 10th through 13th, we have those mass threats that were made on social media. There are a lot of TikTok threats. I, I put here, there were over 20 that I know of. There could be more, so please don't quote that it's the exact 20, but there were several made. I, I had notated 20 that were made and students were either arrested or suspended from school, over school threats that were made during that time period. And that, that is not, let me just preface and say, that's not here in Scottsboro City Schools, but that was in North Alabama alone. So you have, we had a lot of that going on as well. And then I want you to look at incidents within approximately 100 miles of Scottsboro City Schools outside of December 16th. But you can take a look and see, September 23rd, there was a loaded gun found on the campus here in North Alabama, not, not here at Scottsboro, but in this area within 100 miles. October 18th, we had another loaded gun found on the campus in North Alabama. November 2nd, December 2nd, December 5th. And then December 16th, we were made aware of a school shooting in Wisconsin. So those stay on the forefront of our minds. And again, it, it just keeps school safety at the forefront of our, of our mind and how we can continue to learn and grow. Again, I'm thankful for our district safety team. This team is comprised of district and school level administrators, counselors. Mr. Arnold, don't let me leave anyone out. That would have our nurses on there, that would have our mental health coordinator. And that also brings in our local law enforcement and emergency responders. So that would be our fire, EMA, all of those. So this, Mr. Arnold's done a great job in bringing this group of folks together to have conversations. We've brought them onto our campuses to help us with walkthroughs, to look for things from their perspective and their lens that they can share with us because everybody's knowledge and everybody's line and lens is so critical for us. But also, just to bring up our mental health referrals, again, we're grateful for the fact that we are an MTSS pilot school. We look at the whole child, so outside of the academic realm, we're looking at the behavioral realm. We know that the school off, the school resource officer, you know, I think, I'm not asking anyone else to agree with me, but I agree with Officer Revels in that the school resource officer is one of the most primary, most significant pieces of our school safety plan. We also know that relationships are critical. The more relationships that not only our, our school resource officer, but all of our staff have, the more we know about our students, the more relationships that we have formed, the better informed we're going to be, to be able to hopefully get information that's going to help us get to our resource officers to maintain a safe campus. But mental health referrals have been a concern. We know that now, now there is a line item in our state budget each year for a mental health coordinator at each campus, I'm sorry, in each system, in each district. There is money allotted. That money does not pay for the, um, the full salary of a mental health coordinator. But we have been very fortunate to be able to keep a mental health coordinator full-time. We have a social worker. We, we tie grants and other opportunities that we have to be able to, to have those support staff as part of our safety plan. But I want you to take a look at our mental health referrals that we've had since 2021. And again, just to be clear here, each year, we're seeing more and more mental health referrals coming through. And so our counselors, our social workers, they're doing a fantastic job in conjunction with the classroom teachers to help identify those students who might need that extra layer of assistance. So these things are what are concerning and prompt us when we think about what school safety measures might be helpful for us to have. I do feel like we have a strong plan. You know, a lot of people don't understand when rhythm, if y'all remember when we rolled out rhythm, people were like, what in the world is rhythm? But rhythm is a daily, basically a, a temperature check, so to speak, for students to say whether, how their day is going. And they can give, even a young child, as young as kindergarten, can click on a picture of a smiley face or, or somebody who's crying or sad. They can tell us how they're feeling. And we all know that those relationships are important, but not every student is comfortable speaking necessarily to an adult, but they might put something in a computer that might be helpful. And so we want to put all of those things in place that we can. But nothing has been replaced, that relationship that we have. And I, I'm grateful to our staff for the relationships that are here and exist here for our students. I think that is one of the biggest pieces to our safety plan that, that we have. But outside of that, there are some physical safety needs that I think we have. So if you can advance that slide, Russ. The first thing we'd like to introduce to you is a Synthegix crisis alert response system. We're going to take a second, I think, rather than me trying to explain it. It's a very short video. It's about two minutes. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like for everybody to take a look at what this is and what it does.
In an emergency, every second matters. Time is the most critical element when it comes to emergency response. Knowing we need help and precisely where help is needed, reducing the time it takes to get help, achieving the best possible outcome depends on reducing the time it takes to identify an emergency, notify everyone of the emergency, and respond to the emergency with crisis alerts. With Synthegix, staff members can react to situations immediately. By pressing a single button on their crisis alert badge, an alert is sent to administrators and responders with precise location information down to the floor and roof level. In worst case scenarios, such as intruders intending to do harm, staff should use the crisis alert badge to communicate to 911 dispatch directly while initiating a facility-wide lockdown. Crisis alert includes audio, visual, and desktop notifications to ensure that everyone throughout the building and the entire facility is aware of what's happening and are able to take the necessary steps to get to safety. No other workplace safety solution works as rapidly as crisis alert. It needs seconds. Staff are empowered to signal a need for help, to notify others to their need for help, and show responders precisely where that help is needed. Crisis alert is part of the Synthegix safety platform that includes solutions for visitor management, visitor locating, dynamic digital maps and reunification, creating safer environments in schools, healthcare settings, commercial buildings, and workplaces throughout the country. Synthegix uses a purpose-built network that covers the entire property, both inside and out, no matter the number of buildings on a given campus. It also operates independently of cellular or Wi-Fi without alterations to physical structures or electrical wiring. This year, customers used a Crisis Alert wearable badge in response to over 150,000 incidents from the everyday to the extreme, trusted by over 4,000 organizations. Crisis Alert technology brings safety to every corner of your workspace by pressing a single button because your safety matters every day. To learn more or request a demo, visit synthegix.com.
Thank you, Russ. So that is just a brief overview about what the Synthegix platform does and what it allows. You can see on the picture there, you can see where the circle is and there is, it shows you then in the colors. I know that may be hard for everybody else to see out there, but it, it shows if I'm a responder, this is showing, that big circle's showing me where the crisis is. And then it's showing up here. Here's where the cafeteria is. If you could see that, it would show you. Here's where the cafeteria is. Here's where an AED is located. Here's where there's a bleed control kit. Here's how close you are to a first aid kit. So again, depending upon the situation that we have, a first responder would know that may not know by so-and-so's room, they're going to know by a number in this platform exactly where to respond, and that's going to cut down, that's going to save time. So we really like this. We, we came to know and understand a little bit more of this because we found out that this was actually the exact same system that the school in Georgia, where the Georgia shooting occurred, purchase, had just purchased and just put into place. And so knowing that they, and I have not spoken to anyone directly, but when we're speaking with Synthegix, that's where we found that information out. And they were just, it's my understanding that their school's a kind of a remote area, kind of like us. And so that's why they wanted a system like we want. And this system- And this system, y'all might have caught them saying in there that it does not rely on your Wi-Fi, it's going to require some communications update. And you have a quote for that in there, and I'm gonna ask Russ and Jason, along with y'all, kind of talk about what else it's gonna need to help make sure this is working properly. I appreciate it.
Part of what the system, it doesn't rely on, like if we lose internet connectivity, it doesn't rely on that. One of the other things it does is it has to try and radio, and it basically, it searches out any frequency from any of the cell providers, and can take that and actually use that to make the notifications to the police, to the ambulance, whatever. So that was one of my concerns, because we are, if we lose internet in the city for any reason, how are we gonna get this thing to communicate if it's relying on Wi-Fi? Well, it's not. And that's one of my questions I have, because currently, if we have a fiber line cut in town, which is unlikely, but it's very possible, we lose all communication to the school, because our phones are based on internet, or Wi-Fi, which allows Wi-Fi calling is based off internet, things of that nature. If the internet goes down, it's a real safety concern for us. It's one of the things we've been looking at and trying to resolve. Jason's got some information about what we're talking, what we're looking at doing with the police department, department, because they own part of the towers and the system, using some radios that are independent of cell service, because some of the schools, once you're in the building, cell service is really non-existent.
That's what I was gonna ask about this. So if internet did go down and it depended on cell service, most schools don't have cell service.
Right.
So would this be sort of like what you're fixing to explain, would it work off of that repeater?
Well, yes. What tied into this is upgrading to digital radios in our school. The digital radio system, which Russ spoke to you just briefly, we got the, I started communicating with Chief Latimer a while back, and he gave us the green light and he pointed us toward Jimmy Green, because actually it's the city, water gas, they're a deal, and they allow people to join fire and so forth. So we would like to be, you know, a frequency on there, because what, you know, if we have a gas leak, we go over to the water gas and say, "Hey, we got the going on Nelson," or whatever. Problem is, where we want to be a good steward and help is that I've spoken with, right here, it's the Mobile Communications America, Ms. Miller, and she pretty much, I've asked her about a repeater, because we've talked about Nelson on the end of town, because no signal. And so could we, you know, if we could join the system, could we fit a bill for a repeater? And in communications where we are now, what we identify, there's some things, tests that you'd have to do to get that with us as to the best optimal place to put the repeater. But we know we want one towards Nelson, and we'd like one around Caldwell's too, as well, so that, you know, we can boost that signal so the city can those areas. But as far as radios, you know, you can have a handful at each, each school. The radios we have now are simply inline radios, and they could be used for my car duty, my teacher, when I form away, but these new upgraded ones will be used for the personnel only that need those things. The buses would be all new CB radios, every secretary would get a new station, the base station. And I think at high school, I think we had about seven radios figured for there, and every other school got about five, you know, because it's just the principal being there for, it's just the principal, that kind of stuff. But the repeaters are the main thing, it's kind of what we would like to bring to the table and offer, once we find out that is a possibility and it looks like it may be. Jimmy Green, you talked, you spoke with Jimmy as far as how this works.
Yeah, he kind of, you know, we just had a real quick conversation about it, and really the only, according to Jimmy, we've got to sit down and finalize all this, but according to him, there's no yearly cost, no anything with that. He said, "But what they're doing now is, they set the system up, and what they've asked everybody to bring in when they come to the bank." I'm not real, I'm not sure exactly what he's talking about. We've not got a response back from Ms. Miller there on that. What it's gonna do is just give more capacity to the whole system, which if we come in, I think we could come in now, but if you get in, what he's saying, an accidental disaster or anything like that, there's gonna be so many people on that system, we're just expanding it and making it bigger. So that's also something that's going to be wrong. But I think it's right in line with those prices on those repeaters, you know, so it's not a huge expense.
I think $11,000 to $13,000 per repeater, I think is what you're going to get, I assume. But 11 to 13.
And so, but the only thing he asked us, and he said, "This is kind of how they operate", is, you know, like, says, "There's really not any kind of yearly fees, anything like that." He said, "But what they've done is like, if they have an issue, have a problem, it's gotta be worked on, they're footing a bill for it, and then I think it goes to everybody, you know, I think you got fire, fire department, and you just, we're just gonna split that, whatever that bill comes into being, whatever." And that's, I mean, I think that's a spares, you know, everybody's helping to maintain the system, and they're all for it, because they've got issues. I know, you know, Patrick, like Caldwell, you know, that's an issue for them, their, people with their radios, you know, with that being a storm shelter, there's no, there's not just, we checked it from get-go, but once we got the windows in, we lost, we lost service.
But it's just like a cellphone, it's either you have a signal or you don't, there's no static.
Right.
Well, the one benefit of it is, is it gives us a direct, direct line to any emergency service that we need.
Yeah.
That's the one important thing about it, that we currently, I mean, it's either get with SRO or pick up the phone and try to make a phone call, but if you don't have cell service and you don't have internet phones, then how are you gonna get any, you know, it solves a real safety problem for us, for us communication.
And even still, like, we, like, I think, this is just talking for Jimmy, like, he's got direct lines, like with his supervisors, you know, so like, you know, you could have a one-on-one conversation, a private conversation, where, you know, you just swap channels on your frequency to that, so you could have one-on-one conversations. So if we do lose, lose phone, you do have that path. I mean, there's a lot to it, you know, and it's, you know, you're gonna have different frequencies for different departments or whatever, but then you've got that one main channel. But it, we bring a little bit to the table with it by adding those repeaters in those areas, because that's, that's a low service area for the existing, we're gonna, you know, it's helping that out, so everybody's gonna benefit.
Well, the EMA is highly in favor of us doing this, as well as fire and police and gas as well. So it's, we're being accepted, and, you know, everybody, you know, Scottsboro, you know, everybody got to hear something comes into the system, and it's just to help safety of all schools and of the community.
Well, in a way, it's a win-win for everybody.
That's right.
Yeah, you know, gives the emergency services a direct line to us, if something's going on, they've got notified or something, they can just beat us, so we've got insane information. And it's a two-way street, don't it? But it just gives us an extra communication, which we do not have right now.
And so one part of that would be an agreement that we don't have ready. I mean, that is part of what we're working to get, but our biggest concern with this particular platform is getting, you know, obviously, schools are purchasing this, many schools are. And so we need to get approval to get our name on the waitlist, to get it, because it will take some time to get it here and get all the equipment.
I think it's like an eight week.
It takes, it takes about eight to 12 weeks, but then installation is not the word I was, that's the word I was looking for a minute ago, but then all that will have to be, you know, set up and everything. So we would like to get that piece done, and in my mind, we could still be working on the agreement that would have to come to you for approval as well. But we'll continue to do that. And you can also see in your packet, there is, it's mobile communications, that's the quote that you are referencing as far as the.
School buses and all the handhelds in every school, the school buses and CBs, things.
But I don't, I don't think that quote has the, the repeaters are not.
And stuff on there.
So we may have an updated, we may have to update that information as we're working on it. And as far as funding goes, again, our APS funds, we were allocated a little $2.3 million this year, and we earmarked a lot of that money for purchases like this that were school safety specific, so that's where the funds, that's where these funds would come from. And I would point out that the quote that you have in front of you for SynTeJix is a five-year, so you're looking at the amount, and this will be a five-year piece. So that is a good, it's good to know that it would be in place for five years.
Yes, so thank you for your last few comments, because funding was gonna be a concern here. $294,000 plus the $87,000 for Mobile Communications America. And are these, these radios, are these phones, are they like satellite phones, you have to be outside for them to work, or can they work inside, inside the buildings? Will I have to trade in my little card right here to get one with a button on it or something?
It's actually an add-on card to what you get. It's getting a little add-on card to what you get.
It will be two badges that everybody wears.
Oh, okay, the two badges.
There's badges to identify you, and then the other badge.
Okay.
And I would also point out, it, you're wearing that badge, you know, the hope is that we never have to activate that badge, right? That would be everybody's hope. But it's not, we're not locating you or anything until you actually tell us you need assistance. You push that button, and that's when we're gonna know, here's who this is, here's where they are, and that's when the system goes into place then.
You may have said this, but does it always work inside the buildings, or will it work on the campus, like if you were outside? Like if there were PE class outside, and that?
The video said outside. Well, the, that's something we'll end up having to look at, because what we're doing is we're focusing on the inside of the building now, right? You know, basically, because one of the things that you have, most of your schools, you have taken place inside, not necessarily outside of the inside, something happens.
Definitely, we need that confirmation.
Which would just be a matter of adding some gateways on the outside of the building, which they call, what they call a gateway, is a little device that actually communicates with the badge. So it would just be purchase and make sure the load is to, think of this.
Well, if the button is pressed, and you got repeaters, or you got some type of way that's gonna communicate, and they will know whether you're inside or out, because it's gonna be like, I guess.
Well, they, they should, what SynTeJix does is get like a floor plan of our school system, and they put that into a website, and based on the floor plan, they, you know, you're outside of that, it would show a location. So.
It's a suit up, I fell, can't get it.
That's right. I fall in and I can't get it.
Again, but I think that's a great point, because we might need medical assistance outside if we're at the playground, so that's a great question. So we would want to make sure we cover that. No, go ahead.
The badge, basically, you can set it for two different, like, a couple of different settings, so many pushes and not by, like, three clicks of the button, then you could do eight clicks of it, you just repeat the presses, and then that notifies the people that are nearby. So it just depends on what, what kind of setting.
You're gonna have to intentionally want to get the police members, you got to show up. I think it was four, not three, Russ, I think it was four, for the, for your administrators, SRO to go to your room, and it was eight.
To actually get the.
Everybody come on.
Not a touch switch, just.
Correct. You've actually got to make it a conscious effort to push your button.
And this is the type of system we need to check in that.
It is.
Uh, they've all identified it. Yes, SynTeJix did buy it again.
And so part of the quote, it's a great point that y'all brought up, because part of the quote, if you notice, it has annual fees for visitor management, and it's included. So now we wouldn't have to pay annually for that, for our badge system, it would just be in the packet.
Got to heal two for it, so.
Yes. So that's a lot of information and very comprehensive, but again, as I was talking about, our district safety team, we have brought everybody in, we've had phone conversations, everybody's looked through this, we've asked, again, police, fire, EMA, everybody, you know, they've weighed in on this system, and we feel like this will be, you know, a valuable system, and I hope it makes everybody, you know, feel like, hey, this, this is gonna help me feel safer, because I have a way to let somebody know if I'm in a situation and need help.
So will this encompass the entire school district, each building?
Each building.
What about at the bus garage?
Um, does this cover the bus? Should we look at that? I think it's.
Well, that's a great question.
I'm gonna say bus garage, they don't move to the buses, but I, that's probably extending it a little too far.
You know, to be honest, I don't know, we didn't really say, let's talk about this, but you know, I guess them coming to map the buildings and to get this, we haven't really got that far, you know, maybe, I know inside would offer to send people down, we got mapped with them inside for safety purposes, and they have ways to send the people down and take the pictures, for only their eyes only, but so they can know in person, if they get there, what it looks like from the inside of the rooms. Like, I would assume that I'm, we'll tell you about that, I'm assuming, we haven't got that far with these people. At some point, they would have to come, probably get their own down as far as mapping, and, you know, an update, and so that, that could be something for, you know, at that time, we're gonna employ the bus car, or we'll often be employed.
We can ask that question and make sure we get you that answer, because it is a great question.
Yeah, it's, they're part of our system.
Yep. Uh, we did specifically ask about all of our buildings, but I'm not sure that we communicated the bus shop, so we want to make sure that we have communicated that, so I'll get you that answer to that question.
Gee, I'm looking out for it.
One more question.
Yes, please.
So how, the current staff badges are now, you don't only work for the building, you can carry it to whatever, so Russ is wearing his lever button, and it doesn't matter which building, if he goes in, it's gonna work, it doesn't matter if Mr. Amos is at Caldwell, but then he goes after high school, his button still works at the high school, it's not just.
It's not, yeah, it's not, it's first.
It would be system-wide, and it's gonna pick up that location. It's my understanding, is that correct?
No, it's like, there'd be a hub here, and that badge reads that hub with that floor plan, you go to high school, it reads that floor plan. I'm just thinking out loud.
Right, and you can see why that's gonna take a minute to get all that set up, yeah. Any other questions? So we'll move to the second piece. So the second piece of the safety items that we are asking to consider and possibly use would be the OpenGate metal detection system. You can see a picture, and this picture, I'll just, for a disclaimer, it came straight from the website, the OpenGate metal detection system. They are portable, they can be used indoor and outdoor, they're very easy to assemble and very versatile. They can be used at entrances for the school, they can be used at entrances at our athletic facilities, and they are fairly accurate. So there's several school systems that are using these, are putting them in place, or have had put them in place, and again, this is another measure of that safety and security. I know that we've had a lot of our faculty, a lot of staff members, and a lot of parents reach out, especially after September, when the shooting in Georgia occurred, and then as we see the threat, and we continue to see these gun incidents on campuses that are nearer and nearer to us. You know, I just, I just think we're here, and it's time, and it's a point in time to consider this being another measure for our students and our schools every day, and of course, this will be for everybody. So we're looking specifically to start, as I understand, I have spoken indirectly in some, in some text threads, but I do have a conversation lined up with a couple of superintendents who were just not available over the last week or so, but I do, I do intend to have some conversations to see exactly, you know, how you're using it and what, what would you say to me about it? That there are school systems who do have this in place. That there are school systems who do have this in place, um, and I can provide some feedback, you know, from them. If you'd like to have that, I'll be happy to share that information with you.
Please.
Um, but the pros obviously are, it's another way to identify whether someone is coming onto our campuses, whether that be an athletic facility or whether that be coming into our school, um, with some type of weapon on them, on their person. And, um, you know, that would just be another measure and I think a safeguard for our faculty and staff to know this has, you know, happened. I will tell you that most of the schools that have put these in place start with one school. And typically their data indicates high school is where you would start because they're using that data to see, have we had instances of violence? Have we had those weapons on campus? That's typical. Doesn't mean that's where it has to be, but I think that would be our first, um.
How many of these units are we, are we thinking about purchasing?
Yes, sir, so the quote that you have in front of you is for three units. And so the unit consists of both pieces that you see pictured there.
It also says this proposal is valid since December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Yes, sir, and so we have reached out, I say we, but GT actually reached out. Do we have confirmation? Are they gonna try to give us?
Yeah, I got, I got an email this afternoon from about four o'clock that, we've been back and forth the other week. It was, it said usually on the twentieth of every year, they have a price increase. So I asked him that and he didn't know, he, he reached out to me this afternoon and said, I'm gonna try and hold this price. He said, I should be able to, he said, I can't, a hundred percent, but I feel like you will because he's, he's asked me, um, you know, when we thought we would get this approved, if we do, it would be, you know, the first of one, uh, first of January. So I, I feel like you will, I, I can't say for certain.
Right.
I really don't have that for sure, but, you know, we're looking at maybe five, five percent is what he talked about. So I mean, that may be a worst case scenario.
According to him, that's the tip, that's been the typical price increase over time. So we're not, he's not saying we won't get it, but he's going to try since he's come here and done a demonstration for, um, for our team. That, um, that he's gonna try to keep that, hold that for us and.
What, what type of weapons does it detect? I mean, will it detect a lock?
You can, you can, it, it comes with a, a weapon that's the same makeup as a, like, sort of lock or nine millimeter or whatever a V brand. And so it will detect that, but it also has settings that like a principal could be advantageous and it can help them out in certain ways, in certain scenarios. You know, you don't wanna go on off for your three-ring binder, which you might, he said a tactical knife, some spine of a rear-ring binder, a little like a tactical knife. But you can adjust it to where it's not setting those things off or it's, it finds those things, but you can also adjust it to where, let's say like your laptop is gonna pick it up every time. But, you know, we're all fake and those type of things, pocket knives, you know, you can, you can find those as well. So, um, you can adjust it some. And it runs on eighteen volt battery. That's one of the pros as well, you can go get it at Lowe's, on the phone.
Milwaukee.
Milwaukee, it sure is. Can't beat that, Milwaukee, that's right.
I love this idea, but I don't want this to be something that gets stuck in the closet. I don't wanna pay sixty thousand dollars for something that gets stuck in the closet. Because it's gonna be a headache for the first two or three uses.
Well, there's going to be some challenges. The biggest challenge that we see is how we're going to staff because there has, there has to be two people at each, um, unit, okay? That, that you scan, so you have to, typically, your resource officer would be available and then your administrators. That's typically who would be overseeing this. And we already talked about what some challenges could look like because there's not a one hundred percent this is gonna be just way at this school or this school. They're gonna have to be custom. Um, so the other, the other thing is, as I mentioned with the Strategic piece, um, and we need that agreement for the communication piece, this is going to require a board policy. So we're gonna have to have that and I've already spoken with our board attorney and we're working to put that together. However, um, I do feel strongly that if we could go ahead and get that approved and get it ordered, we can have time to get a board policy in place while we're doing that. So, and this also requires that the, that the two people who are at each of these checkpoints be trained. So while, upon approval, let's say you approve, um, we can get on order, get it here and have our people go through the training piece. So once the board policy is there, we have also worked out how is this going to look, you know, at, at a school of our choice which we start or an athletic facility. So we're having to work on those things and, and it will take, it's going to take some, some thinking and some time.
With doing this, do y'all think we need to go to a clear bag policy at sports events, a certain size clear bag?
We're not ruling out looking at anything. I, I don't have a problem with that, I think it's something that we're going to have to consider, um.
Any state ball games go to, you, I mean, you gotta buy by the, the bag policy, metal detector?
Yeah, if we look at going with that as a policy, it wouldn't just apply to our facilities, it would apply to the school and students, faculty and staff. So again, that, that is something that we would have to consider, but, you know, when we talk about safety, I think we have to be able to put everything on the table and have a discussion about it.
Yeah, and I think we're, um, there's a lot of, a lot of different facets to this versus the, the badge system. You got females and, uh, you have to have a policy for a way to check females and males and other things.
And that is where, again, um, we will have to have a, a policy with procedures in place before we ever put, put this system in use if it were to be put in use. And you would have to look at the policy and obviously approve that policy. And so, of course, it pertains to our faculty and staff, also Mr. McDaniel would be a part of that process as well.
Have, have you talked to any of them that said what the, what this, uh, calls students to wait? That, I guess the time it took to run a whole school.
Oh, to get the school through.
Full of students and staff inside the building.
That is a question that I have for the superintendents when I speak to, to the few that I'm going to. But I know that, um, this particular system, um, and y'all commented, it's me too. Um, I was told this system is used in many of our seven A high schools that are gonna be our largest schools in the, in the state.
Devices that are, if you go to Tuscaloosa to gain, Auburn to gain, these are the exact same.
And they're designed for mass amounts of people to pass through and still detect those larger spines or the larger knives and the guns. That's why there's a setting, you only, you don't log it up and you have a two-hour delay.
What, what's going to happen in my mind, and this is a question that I have, is how did this start with onset? You're gonna have some delays when we first start this. But what, we were told by, um, the vendor is it picks up really quickly, like once we get into the routine and.
Well, the kids, the kids learn what, what can and can't go through, basically. I, my notebook ain't gonna go through, so I'll be there.
I need to walk there and my laptop.
The laptop, you put it, you know, you have a table, you know, pretty much beside it and you say, put your laptop on the table. Pretty much like when you think that you're going through the airport or something like that. Here's where you put your, here's where you put your cell phone, here's where you put your laptop.
Thought it said in here how many at one time, like.
But typically, I mean. He, he said it's very, it's very quick.
Two, four hundred an hour.
This company that, this company that designed this, this is what you go through with the exact, I mean, this is the, the same company, isn't it? She, was that a full body standard? That's, that's this same company. So they're, they've been business a long time and that's, that's what these were designed for, was to.
It's more of like a, it's a metal slash X-ray detector. If that makes sense. It, I mean, because it says like you can change a setting to pick up a pocket knife.
Yeah, that's.
But at that same time, it won't pick up a three-ring binder. So it kinda detects what that size is.
And it, and too, you know, like I'm saying, you know, you can change it, you know, and it's what a lot of schools do is just randomly, you know, you're running on a school, they call it a school setting.
School, yeah.
You're gonna run that nine some time, well, you might come in one day and decide, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna check everybody. And you drop that setting to the, the highest setting, you're gonna find, you know, we went through like even a small pocket knife, keys, all that, you know? When it's in a school setting, you're not like, it's in your pocket, it's not gonna get those.
But you may want that setting in, in terms of an athletic event. You know, they may be different based on what, where you are.
And you know the majority of that knife was plastic, except the blade didn't detect it if you did that.
About body parts and things.
Well, I would be a great.
No comment, no worries.
Oh, oh, golly, get the man out. I, I was just thinking about health issues, me myself, I was putting my.
Well, and all the closure, Dr. P, is I have some pins in my foot from the first surgery. So we could help myself out really good, to see how they are.
Yeah.
Because I guarantee you I've had some issues at the airport before that.
Yeah.
Well, one of, one of the benefits about it would be you'd be able to take these to a classroom and just do a classroom activity. Just have the kids walk through, see if they get a baby, something of that nature or, you know, anything, anything they would have brought in that they managed to get by a house and a station was. So you could just, it's affordable to carry and put them outside doors, classroom with that sort of. Okay, there's a baby, come on.
And again, you wouldn't have to necessarily go through if, if we didn't want to, I mean, to me. Might not have to go through it every day, but you don't know when you're gonna go through it. So that's another way to consider them. And again, those are questions that I kinda wanna know how schools, how the, how the superintendent and the school team decided. How, how did y'all walk into this piece? And that's the conversation I still have on the table to have, so, um, but again.
Do you think you'll have that before the?
I do, I, I most certainly think I will and if I don't, I'll definitely let you know. But I would, I mean, I, I would think I can easily get that, but I guess.
I like it. I'm, I'm just, I was just asking those questions because.
Sure. And let me go back to funding again, as I mentioned, these would be safety items that we put in the ATF sign, so there's no local commitment. Um, will be all those funds designated for safety. So, um, as I understand, y'all correct me if I'm wrong here, uh, the clothes that you're looking at, of course, that pays for them. There are, um, there would not be any more annual fees for this. The only replacement items would be the batteries, um.
Yes, badges look like third wheel walking badges, you just, Lowe's, all the above.
Right, um, also we did not tell them, it's in the package, so if we take them outside, the platforms that they sit on.
Yeah, that's a factor. It's like, yeah, it's a middle of like, or like when you're outside and the wind outside.
Maybe more than you should have got at Trail.
Three.
Visitor, home, and home.
Mars football game, you got three. I mean, when you go to the track and field, you primarily will have one that you can set it up obviously up closer to the, the front there because that's where we set the gate and everything. You know, track and field would be, would be difficult to set at least with the equipment, the opposite end, you know?
And each one, again, that's a great point because each sport, each school, each particular, I mean, they're all gonna be custom for that particular event. So we're gonna have to have a plan for how that would look for each. Any other questions about those?
So let's.
Okay, so let's go to the last pieces. And again, I did mention the call, the board policy that something would be working on.
Thank you.
I'll make sure I cover it. All right, so our last piece that we want to look about, uh, look around and discuss is some fencing that we have identified as, of course, there's, there's a lot of things, um, that when you're looking at safety, there's a lot of discussions. But we could talk about fencing, I'm sure, and there could be other areas, but these are areas that we have prioritized as the first part of what we would, we would do. And again, I have drawn here, you have copies of pictures that are, um, in your packet that's, that are drawn more to scale. This is just so you would kinda have a general idea, but you will actually have in your packet something that shows you a little bit more like even where gate openings might be. This is just so that everybody gets a gen, a generic, here's what I'm, I'm talking about. So this is Collins, and if you can see, um, this would be at the, you see the, the street in front of Collins right there. Um, this would be where the existing playground for live skill students exist, that's in pink right there. And that, that part of the fence needs replacing. As you know, you've already approved for a, um, for new playground equipment there. And so we know that we're gonna need to read sense based on that playground, so that's in pink. But then in yellow, um, this would be the perimeter of the area that we're talking about at Collins. So y'all wanna comment on?
Just, you know, general safety, you can drive by Broad Street and see kids run around playing PE all day and, you know, we would like to run it on, on the side at the bottom of the street. Some of them may have, um, rode the parade and if you came out of the parade, you had a lot of parade debris because there's about a strip, I think my foot between the outer edge and the curb and it collected all that mess. So we would like to bring that out, but flush with the road. So, you know, you, you're in the inner, you're not, you know, it just makes more sense. And so when you do that, till you get to the ditch on the tree, that we would go with the, uh, profile of the ditch. So, you know, the ditch would be on the outside of the fence, so to speak. And come back in, as you see at the top of the stream, there's houses on the other side, you know, not much of a tree line as you can see, so we'll not have a barrier there. When you come in, uh, to the top of, there'll be a, a double drive-through gates at the top where you see the lawnmower shed up top so that you can get in and out right there. Uh, on the bottom, again, for live skills, obviously, we're gonna have, this perimeter fence is gonna be a six-foot plastic, black plastic, you know, coating fence. Uh, it'll be a four-foot interior fence that's pink, uh, which is what they have now, which is, uh, you know, uh, but there will be one entryway for a, uh, single-person gaze, uh, kind of the sidewalk at the bottom that will get you to the front, you know, bit of live skills area right there. Similar to what we have now. We just wanna carry it on closer to the building than where the, if it stops at the grass now, it's when we go on into the side of the building and up the bottom. But this give you a three hundred and sixty-degree, um, six-foot perimeter fence, uh, but still access to get you, you know, mowers or trailer equipment and that kinda stuff in there if you need to.
And just also to point out, um, kinda the rationale for that as, as to what Justin said, it's its location and have a lot of people walking around there. But not only that, for PE purposes, for Collins students in the afternoons, that also, um, is the area where Club Wildcat students are. So you have kindergarten through sixth grade students who would be out there in that area. So that is a safety concern, um, as well. Any questions about that particular fence option? Okay, Russ? Okay, and this one is off scale a little bit, um, you have drawings that probably help you see a little bit better, but just so that everybody could see what we're talking about. Um, this is fencing around Trail. Jason or Mr. Arnold, do you don't care if you wanna talk about that?
Uh, starting at the top, um, towards Collins, it would be replacing the fences there already with, again, the same fence we talked about. A, a six-foot plastic coated fence, uh, kinda run down that same area. Uh, when you get to the ditch, uh, same, we're gonna come down to where the ditch is, right around, and again, you can't tell it from here but it's kind of a little bit of an incline, uh, up to where those trees are planted, so we're gonna stay inside the ditch and clean it through. Kinda come back in down towards the bottom where you see the shed is, that's the golf shed. Uh, and actually, there's a, uh, an area that we did for Luke when it's those are javans, but we'll, all that will be uninterrupted. We're tied in the golf shed and you can see as we go back by the stadium, there's gonna be areas for a double gate around where the equipment needs to be towards the shed at the bottom. Uh, midway, um, the practice field where we have a large, there's a break in the cable out there now, that's gonna be a double gate so that they. that's gonna be a double gate, so that they can get their gators and equipment to get things on and off the practice field. Three-quarters the way up, if you're going on back towards Collins, there'll be a break, like a gate where they have their sand, the things that they can get to working. And then almost at the top, even with the weight room at the fieldhouse, there'll be a one-person gate that will allow the players to step out of the weight room and go straight to the practice field and back. If you continue on around where the new scoreboard is, we're gonna have a way, obviously, that we can still get to the scoreboard, but keep people out if we need to work on it. Around the back, you'll see it'll run a similar perimeter that it does now. The road will still be on the outside, it looks like this is a little bit larger on the bottom. The road will still be to the left, but you'll go up there. And if you know where the cable is on the back, you know, golf, we have to let buses come through, they have to let the cable down, and they'll come around. The fence will just do a ninety-degree and go into the wood right there. There'll be a better secured gate, just a simple cage at that point.
While we're going, while we're bidding more than just the practice field, why does it go this way?
This is not. You see that, yeah, the ditch?
That's up you, you're welcome.
Yeah, right there. We would run along that, and mainly for mowing. You don't wanna have, you know, the CD mows that to the right, GPD mows, CD mows that to the ditch to the road. So mainly, it would give you the same purpose, but it'd be a lot less hassle to have to mow this side and go around and mow the outside. You know, send the crew over there to mow the outside strip. The bottom also is, it's gonna dead, it's gonna dead end into the wood there. It's not gonna have a fence across it. It's gonna dead end up into the...
That big tree you said, the bottom, I'm saying. It'll run just like the ditch and curve with the curvature of the ditch and run into that area right there.
Is there any fencing needed, like around the scoreboard?
That's where we are. That's gonna be inside there. And where it's down here a little bit, where you can see it, it's gonna be, it's gonna run right along, right along and through here. And then there's the scoreboard, and then it's gonna run inside here. Again, the road will be to the outside of the fence.
Electrical stuff, you know, under the scoreboard, and I'm like, is that gonna be good?
It's gonna be fenced in, and we're only people that's supposed to be in there.
That's what I'm asking.
That's correct, yes. And since I'm here, like I say, we're gonna continue on right through here. And once, right about here, this will go into the, it'll block that off where you still have parking, but it will replace the cable. That also implements the light towers also.
Yeah, we got triangles.
Once all that works done, then we'll fix those, you know, those triangles.
Around each light tower, yeah, it's kind of the way that picture is, it's hard to see it. But those will be, those will be replaced.
Each triangle will have a thing around that.
And just just on the file too, because of the price of this fencing collectively, this will be an item that we have to replace for bid. So just make sure you know that. Yeah, so that's our best estimate, so we will have to place that for bid. The other items that we mentioned are on purchasing cooperative, so we won't have to do that for those, but this one actually will. So we're giving you our best, best idea. Can you go back to the previous slide that's more of the school? You know how like here, there's a gate in the, there, so that you can't get in? What about like this area here? Like is there a need for something there? If you're facing anywhere? Because that is where Club Wildcat children go in and out of the building. And so if we're doing it, like I think we should at least consider that portion too, because it's unsecured, especially compared to the rest of the building. For that, you're very big to that. Karen, Ms. Bratford?
Do you hear her?
No, yeah.
This is, Amy and I were talking a little bit about that this afternoon, she was showing me the file. And I mentioned, okay, those children go from that very, that loop right there on the back end of the building.
Point me.
Yeah, you're welcome. Come on, come on.
Yeah, look, yours.
Okay. So we have children all in this area in the afternoon, who are going from various parts of the building. The main part of the building that we are using is right here. This is where we're actually housed. All right? So they go from out this door into the pavilion area, and then they either go down this, we have trained them to go down this sidewalk right here, or the teacher that is right here.
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, I mean, we have, we have the trainees how to get around the building, so that they are constantly aware of their surroundings.
Yeah.
So they will go, and there's a teacher right here that reflects back, communicates to the teacher here.
With walkie-talkies.
With walkie-talkies, that children are crossing around the corner. So it would be very nice to have this secure right here, because with this secure, when we're out here, now that we're gonna get a playground, they're all in this area right here. They can come through this gym area, door, pavilion, door, and not have to go around this building. So there are cars at times, I mean, we have one last sign that just showed up. You know, we, when it gets dark, we're inside.
Right.
I mean, probably ten, fifteen minutes before it gets dark.
Yeah.
But it's a, it's a concern, so.
We can definitely, thank you. No, that's good, thank you. Any other questions about those?
That's something that we typically just allow the fence company to tear the fence down.
This would be, that's what would be included in the bid.
Yeah, that's right.
I see where it says optional.
Yeah, he offered that. He said, you know, if you'll save a few dollars, you'll tear it down, I mean, more than likely.
I think we wouldn't include it, see, see what it is, yeah. Anyway, upon your approval, that's when we get the bid ready and send it out, so. All right, I believe those are all of the, if I can, that's it. So I don't have any other things. I will mention, there are other safety items that we are looking at and, they do a great job. I thank you for your hard work on this. Just as an aside, we'll have some capital projects listed later for your approval, but just know that our security cameras, we're gonna be coming for that to expand, you know, what we currently have, you know, principals, as well as our admin team has gone over each campus and all of our athletic facilities. We're probably gonna be wanting to add what we are viewing and seeing, so that's one of the things definitely that we'll be looking at. We're looking at some door locking mechanisms. We're looking at all kinds of things. But one thing I did not mention that I need to add is with the metal detectors, if we go that route, there will have to be some signage that we have posted on all of our schools and all of our campuses. So with that will be an additional, you know, we have to get that together. We're not that far yet, but just so you know, that would be an added expense that we would need.
What about a dog?
Again, as I mentioned, I'm not opposed to any discussion, anything with safety.
I don't know what a dog costs to train any of it.
That's something I would definitely have to look into, but I do think that...
So you do have to get a grant for that, and a dog, the grant would have to pay for everything tied to the dog. And then you do have to have the individual, and they are responsible, the sales, of making sure that the dog is kept up and everything to that nature. But a grant has to provide that. In the state, you might be able to work something out with the state, but the public funds would not be able to care for the dog. All the grant items would have to be public, and that, and having that one individual go train, we can't have two people that are trying for that, I believe. So there is a possibility, but it does have to be a grant or like...
Thank you. I did not know any of that information, so thank you. But again, I think that in looking at school safety, I don't think there's any item or topic that can't be for discussion, where you gotta put it out there and talk about it. So, I think it's a great question. Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay, well, I don't have any other items for saving. Mr. Williams, I'll turn it back over to you.
Board member comments? Dr. Pierce?
I wanna thank everybody for their dedication and commitment, not only tonight, but throughout the entire school year. And thank you for your hard work, and happy holidays to all.
Thank the faculty and staff for everything you did. Y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you all for everything that you did. Thank you for making, um, these life days for school so fun for the students and best it. And they're excited, and everybody's gonna be excited to get a little bit of a break and come back and make sure that they go for the second semester. And I appreciate all that you've poured into the children, and every part that you've done to get them here on time and safe and all that stuff. Thank you.
You know, everybody have a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Be safe, eat a lot, love on your family. God bless everybody.
I'll just say the same. I appreciate the efforts of everybody. Nobody realizes, I think, a lot of times, all of the work in the back, all those things that nobody sees, that things that come across effortlessly, but we all know, there's a lot of people who take a lot of time every day, and that's all our staff. And so I'm grateful for everybody, and just hope you have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Did things that make you relax and refreshed and ready to start in January, because we'll have another semester, and we'll be ready to start. But I hope everybody enjoys, you know, Christmas, and I appreciate all the partnerships. Again, as I mentioned earlier today, it takes a while with the torque in the air, so thank you all.
To a journey.
Thank you.